But their pets still gotta eat, their pets still gotta be healthy.
Because of the pandemic, people can't afford it right now. People are losing their jobs. So money's a little tight budget right now. So why not bring your dogs and cats?
My mother got laid off because she was working as a waitress. And so all the closures, she hasn't been able to work as much. And so this right here would just alleviate it slightly. It'll help our pocketbooks a little bit.
Vaccinations and the chipping, they're just so expensive nowadays. So that being able to do this and give people, you know, the opportunity to get their dogs cleaned and, you know, stuff like that is just great. Because it's free and it's stuff that a lot of us can't afford.
But what's also important is we're building community. And that hardly happens during a COVID era.
I'm just excited to be here. All the dogs are super cute and it's nice that they're gonna get taken care of.
I just think it's a really good thing that Homeboys is doing. Even though they can't open fully, they're still trying to engage the community. And I think it's a really, it's a really good thing that they're doing for everybody.
Pets are part of our family. That's what helped everybody cope through the pandemic. Because you've got friends at home, you've got somebody to share with. And if you're alone, pets the world to you. I mean, this is who you want, this is who you live with. Especially nowadays where we're having a quarantine or we're seeing infection rates spike. Pets are our little people at home, they're part of our families. It's who we live with, it's who we love.
You know what, this is my first time ever having a puppy. So it's very young. I think it's very important for my family.
Pets are family.
Pets are family. And this guy right here definitely needs his nail trim. So he'll be happy after this.
Speaking of pet trimming, it's Responsible Pet Owners Month. The Willows, a bridge home opens for unsheltered Angelinos. And Councilmember Price wants to hear your nomination for the 2021 Shiro's Awards. These stories and much more up next on City Beats.
February is Responsible Pet Owners Month. Along with giving your animal love and attention, pets rely on owners to feed them, care for them, and keep them safe. Part of keeping our furry friends safe is by following city and state pet laws that were created to protect you, your pet, and your community. The City of Los Angeles Municipal Code provides information on everything from lease laws to spay and neuter guidelines. Information on keeping your pets in sync with city laws and regulations can be found at laanimalservices.com. In a continued effort to help keep unsheltered people in housing and off the streets, Councilmember Blumenfield has announced the West Valley's first bridge housing site, The Willows. The onsite amenities and resources at this latest interim shelter include case management, space for animals, and larger quarters for couples. The Willows received its name in honor of the Tongva tribe, whose tradition it was to house the needy by constructing shelters from willow trees. Blumenfield is working to open several additional housing and shelter opportunities that are expected to be ready this spring. The Office of Councilmember Price is accepting nominations for the Tribute to Shiro's Awards. A shiro is a woman who has demonstrated leadership, pride, and commitment to her community in a remarkable manner. Nominees must either live in or work with an organization or business in Council District 9. She has to have made or be making a difference in the district in response to the COVID-19 public health crisis. Nominations for the 2021 Tribute to Shiro's Awards will be accepted through February 19. For any questions, please contact Nora Gutierrez at nora.gutierrez@lacity.org.
Well, the vaccines have arrived and Angelinos are slowly but surely receiving the shots. But is it enough? The folks over at L.A. Medical Services have dropped by to give us an honest assessment of how we are actually doing.
How are you feeling from a medical perspective? How are you, how are you looking in terms of the rollout of the vaccine and the lowering of the cases that are positive? And the lessening of the tragedy of the deaths towards COVID? Is it looking good from your role?
It's encouraging. And I think if we, here's the scary part, though. We just need to keep it up. You know, we're not out of the woods yet. So we still need to, don't go out if you don't need to. Wear your mask, stay away from people, wash your hands, and absolutely get vaccinated. You know, we still need to, we still have a ways to go. But I'm really extremely encouraged and I'm so excited that we have two vaccines, some more on the horizon. You know, there's a couple of more. So I think the more vaccines that are out there, and if you have the opportunity to get a vaccine, get a vaccine, for sure.
You know, are there self-check things that we should be doing to make sure that? Because it's hard to see yourself. It's hard, I can see, oh, you're not doing well. But how do I know I'm not doing well?
One thing that everyone is suffering from, whether you realize it or not, is burnout. And not because necessarily you're working so hard, which is what we used to think burnout meant. But it could be burnout from being at home with our spouse or our partner or our children, or burnout from being home alone, or burnout from being the one who has to go and face the pandemic day after day. Burnout comes with irritability, you know, trouble sleeping, low energy, withdrawal. All these things might be signs of that. So it's good to keep an eye out and see if our behavior's changed, how we're coping with it, also what we might be drinking to cope with it. That's another thing that has been an increase in alcohol use lately. All these things are good to keep tabs on.
What's, what's the website in which we can reach out?
I think it's corona/virus.la. It's got information about testing, vaccines, statistics in terms of what the city's positivity rates are. It's very informational.
Okay, well, thank you both for being such incredibly strong advocates for the right things to do and clarifying information. I really, really appreciate it.
Typically, L.A. sanitation workers Jonathan Trong and Carlos Aldapit Torres have a pretty straightforward task. As members of the Pollution Assessment Section from the Watershed Protection Division, they collect water samples and calibrate equipment for impending rains. But in late January of this year, they were at the right place at the right time to save a life. Take a look.
My partner Jonathan Trong and I, we were scheduled to go and sampling at the Machado Lake and Wilmington Drain that, that day. We exited our vehicles and all of a sudden we heard some screaming, like from somewhere. There was a man in the water struggling to swim. So and then right away, we just called 911. Nosotros lo que hicimos fue llamar al 911 directamente, inmediatamente, cuando vimos a la persona ahogándose. Y después mi compañero decidió aventarse al agua para rescatar a la persona que estaba ahogando. Many people who are suffering from homelessness, they just use like any other resources such as the river or any other, you know, water source. So they could just kind of take showers or even like drink the water as well. So this situation is very ongoing, you know, for a long time. It's our duty as city workers, we have the duty to, you know, help the city, but also our citizens as well. Everybody in my group is very attached to each other. We help each other, we respect each other. We, it's like a family for us.
It's African-American Heritage Month, and the U.S. Postal Service has unveiled a new honorary stamp. This year's honoree is none other than Pulitzer Prize-winning playwright August Wilson.
The 44th stamp in the Black Heritage Series honors playwright August Wilson. Between 1982 and 2005, Wilson wrote his acclaimed American Century Cycle, dramatizing experiences of African-Americans during each decade of the 20th century.
He depicted a lot of the emotions, the struggles that was facing the Negro families and the culture.
"Fences," perhaps the best known of Wilson's plays, set in the 1950s, the play dramatizes a family's wrenching conflicts over issues of responsibility and opportunity in the wake of bias and broken dreams. The Broadway production received the Pulitzer Prize for Drama and four Tony Awards.
The winner is "Fences." Author, August Wilson, producer Carol Jordan.
Two weeks after he died, the Virginia Theater in New York City was rechristened the August Wilson Theater, becoming the first Broadway theater to be named for an African-American. It is our honor to unveil the August Wilson Forever Stamp.
A couple of years ago, it was Dorothy Hyatt, who was president for many years of the National Negro Council, Lena Horne, and Marvin Gaye was in the last, within the last five years. So it really means a lot to us to have the opportunity and the privilege to unveil that Black Heritage Month stamp.
August Wilson is the 44th African-American icon to be honored with a U.S. postage stamp. The postage series began in 1978. And the first person to be honored? You guessed it, the woman who may soon be making the leap to the $20 bill, Harriet Tubman. Mike Davis at the Board of Public Works spearheads the African-American Heritage Celebration for the City of Los Angeles, now in its 76th year. The Our Authors Study Club has been working with the mayor's office to promote Afrocentric literacy.
We were founded by Vesey D. Wright in 1945. And we've been around, we've been in organizations for 76 years now. One of the things, as one of our goals and missions, is to support our scholars, to support high school seniors that want to go to a second or fourth year college or university. So we support them. And so we have various events. We have the Scholars Breakfast in July. We also have the great opening ceremony with the City of Los Angeles that has been, every mayor since Mayor Fletcher for the last 71 years have honored the partnership. And so it really humbles us that every mayor has worked with us in making sure that we have a Black History Heritage Citywide program. But we will be having the evening with the authors on the 23rd of this month. And also, we will be celebrating our study club events with our national organization, with the Association for the Study of African-American Life and History. So it's gonna be a fabulous month of virtual experiences.
In the workplace, even people who consider themselves advocates of underrepresented classes can unconsciously act in a manner that is inequitable. For our feature story this week, Malaika Billups with the City of Los Angeles Personnel Department talks to us about implicit bias and the impact it can have on our well-being.
Workplace equity is what we call the experience of having a fair workplace that doesn't treat anyone improperly with respect to their protected categories. And those categories include race, color, ethnicity, gender, sex, gender identity, gender expression, ancestry, age, religion, veteran status, and a host of other statuses that are protected. The goal is to ensure that people are treated appropriately according to their actions, not their identity. There's a lot of research that's been done into the diversity of the City of Los Angeles and the diversity of the city workplace. But diversity in a workplace without inclusion does not reap the benefits that we all understand can come from having a diverse workplace. It's very important that those who are different from us are still included and afforded the opportunity to provide their, their resources, their knowledge, their experience, and bring their whole selves to work so they don't feel like they have to hide a piece of who they are, who their culture is, what their life experience is when they come to work. Executive Directive 27 came out and mandated that the Personnel Department assist the mayor's office in creating an implicit bias training, which is an excellent first step. So we learn about implicit bias for the purpose of understanding what it is and understanding that we all have a responsibility to minimize the negative impacts of our implicit biases. What I want Angelinos to know and what I want for the city family, as we call it, or the city workforce to understand, is that the work that we're trying to do is not to change who people are. It's also not to criticize them or their beliefs or their background or the values that they've grown up with. What we endeavor to do is create a situation in the city workplace where people can work together and can bring their best selves to work. Who they are is able to show up at work and give their very best. That is the ideal of the City of Los Angeles.
Dive into the Hammer Museum Digital Archives. Check out the Lakma exhibit Islamic Art Now or enjoy the 2021 Virtual Black History Month Festival. All this and more up next on Virtual Things to Do.
While their in-person exhibition sites are closed, the Hammer Museum invites you to explore their digital archives. Explore collection areas and past exhibitions online through in-depth repositories of images and research materials. Past exhibits include Now Dig This: Art and Black Los Angeles 1960 to 1980 and Take It or Leave It: Institution Images Ideology. You can catch Hammer Museum's Digital Archive Collection by visiting hammer.ucla.edu. The Los Angeles County Museum of Art invites you to check out their unique online collection, Islamic Art Now: Contemporary Art of the Middle East. The exhibit highlights contemporary works by artists from or with roots in the Middle East. These artists draw inspiration from their own cultural traditions using techniques and incorporating imagery and ideas from past eras. Take in a bit of the Middle East by logging into Los Angeles County Museum of Art. To learn more about these exquisite exhibits, visit collections.lacma.org. It's Black History Month, and the L.A. Public Libraries have joined forces with the Association for the Study of African-American Life and History. Together, they would like to invite you to attend the marquee event of the 2021 Virtual Black History Month Festival. Tune in for a conversation with Henry Louis Gates and Evelyn Brooks Higginbotham, premiering Saturday, February 20 at 10 a.m. For more information on this and all the online events during the 2021 Virtual Black History Month Festival, visit asalh.org. You still have time to check out the Los Angeles Public Library's online series, Fall for Fine Arts II: African-American Artists. Join LAPL for readings and art activities inspired by African-American artists that celebrate African-American History Month. On February 19, the featured artist will be American painter Alma Thomas. This virtual art class is open to all ages but focused on grades K through 5. Don't miss Fall for Fine Arts II: African-American Artists, happening Friday, February 19. For info on how to get a Zoom link, email durant@lapl.org. And that's a look at some virtual things to do.
That's it for this edition. I'm Natalia Bilbao. And from all of us here at L.A. This Week, thank you so much for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. And we're also on Facebook, Twitter, and YouTube. See you next time for more L.A. This Week.
Good morning and welcome to the Los Angeles City Council. Today is Wednesday, February 17. I'm Mary Martinez, the president of the City Council. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Blumenfield.
Blumenfield, present.
Bannon.
Bannon, present.
Buscaino.
Here.
Sadio. De Leon. Harris Dawson. Coetzee. Krikorian.
Here.
Lee.
Present.
Martinez.
Present.
O'Farrell.
Present.
Price. Rahmman.
Here.
Ridley Thomas.
Here.
Rodriguez.
Here.
Thank you. Eleven members and a core, Madam President.
First order of business?
Approval of the minutes of February 16.
Mr. Ridley Thomas moves and Mr. Buscaino seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Lee moves and Ms. Rodriguez seconds, next.
Madam President, would council like all items to go forth with today?
Without objection, that would be the order, next.
Item one is an item notice for public hearing.
During, during public comment.
Members, can you please mute yourselves? Thank you. Please continue.
Item one is an item notice for public hearing. Items two through 16 are items for which public hearings have been held. Committee reports from the Plum and Homelessness and Poverty Committee have been submitted for items two, eight, nine, 10, and 11, and they've been posted to the respective council files. Items 17 and 19 are items for which public hearings have not been held. Items 20 through 25 are items scheduled for closed session for which a public hearing has been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, without objection, those items are now before us. Members, do you wish to call any of these items special? Mr. Blumenfield?
I'd like to call item 11 special for comment, please.
Any others?
That's it.
Thank you. Ms. Rahmman?
I would like to call item six. I just had a question about it.
Good morning and welcome to the Los Angeles City Council. Today is Wednesday, February 17th. I'm Mary Martinez, the President of the City Council. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Blumenfield.
Blumenfield, present.
Bonin.
Bonin, present.
Buscaino.
Here.
Sidiyo. De Leon. Harris Dawson. Corretts.
Present.
Kerkorian.
Here.
Lee.
Present.
Martinez.
Present.
O'Farrell.
Present.
Price. Ramon.
Here.
Ridley Thomas.
Here.
Rodriguez.
Here.
Thank you. Eleven members and a quorum. Madam President.
First order of business?
Approval of the minutes of February 16th.
Mr. Ridley Thomas moves and Mr. Buscaino seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Lee moves and Ms. Rodriguez seconds, next.
Madam President, would council like all items to go forth with today?
Without objection, that will be the order, next.
Item one is an item notice for public hearing.
I'll be detering during public comment.
Members, can you please mute yourselves? Thank you. Please continue.
Item one is an item notice for public hearing. Items two through 16 are items for which public hearings have been held. Committee reports from the Plum and Homelessness and Poverty Committee have been submitted for items two, eight, nine, 10, and 11, and they've been posted to the respective council files. Items 17 and 19 are items for which public hearings have not been held. Items 20 through 25 are items scheduled for closed session for which a public hearing has been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Okay, without objection, those items are now before us. Members, do you wish to call any of these items special? Mr. Blumenfield?
I'd like to call item 11 special for comment, please.
Any others?
That's it.
Thank you. Ms. Ramon?
I would like to call item six. I just had a question about it.
Okay, thank you. Any other specials, members? Saying none, madam clerk, can you please indicate what items we can go ahead and vote on?
Yes, Madam President. Council may vote on items two through five, seven through 10, and 12 through 16.
Okay, let's go ahead and prepare to vote on those items. Please call the roll.
Blumenfield.
Blumenfield, aye.
Bonin.
Bonin, aye.
Buscaino.
Aye.
Sidiyo. De Leon.
Aye.
Harris Dawson. Corretts.
Aye.
Kerkorian.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
O'Farrell.
Aye.
Price. Ramon.
Aye.
Ridley Thomas.
Aye.
Rodriguez.
Aye.
Twelve ayes, these items are adopted. On the closed session items, Mr. Kerkorian, would you like to speak to items 20 through 25?
Thank you, Madam President. Items 20 through 25 have all been considered by Budget Finance Committee, which recommends approval of the city attorney's recommendations for settlement. These are all routine settlements and can be taken up in open session unless members have questions or concerns.
Madam Clerk, let's go ahead and prepare to vote on items 20 to 25, but go ahead and...
Thank you, Madam President. And for item 20, in the case entitled Lonny Lamar Stokes versus the City of Los Angeles, the recommendation is to expend up to $700,000 in settlement. For item 21, in the case entitled Maria Del Refugio Hernandez versus the City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to expend up to $750,000 in settlement. For item 22, in the case entitled Elena Lugo Espinoza versus the City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to expend up to $1,750,000 in settlement. For item 23, in the case entitled City of Los Angeles versus Haik Petrosian et al., there is a recommendation to settle in favor of the city for $650,000 pursuant to a draft final stipulated judgment. For item 24, in regards to a pre-litigation dispute between the City of Los Angeles, HP Inc. and Golden Star Technology, Inc., there is a recommendation to settle in favor of the city for $771,000 and $537. And again, that was $771,537 in the pre-litigation dispute in this matter. And finally, for item 25, in the judgment entitled National Rifle Association versus the City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to expend up to $143,405.39 to satisfy the court order in this judgment.
Just go ahead and prepare to vote on those items. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Blumenfield.
Blumenfield, aye.
Bonin.
Bonin, aye.
Buscaino.
Aye.
Sidiyo. De Leon.
Aye.
Harris Dawson. Corretts.
Aye.
Kerkorian.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
O'Farrell.
Aye.
Price.
Aye.
Ramon.
Aye.
Ridley Thomas.
Aye.
Rodriguez.
Aye.
Thirteen ayes, these items are adopted. Okay, Elizabeth, we'll go ahead and move on to public comment. Madam Clerk?
Madam President, as indicated on the agenda, members of the public wishing to offer public comment should call 669-254-5252 and use meeting ID number 1605358466 and press pound. Press pound again when prompted for participant ID. Once admitted into the meeting, press star nine to request to speak. And finally, when you hear the last four digits of your phone number, press star six. And again, call 669-254-5252 and use meeting ID number 1605358466 and press pound. Press pound again when prompted for participant ID. Once admitted into the meeting, press star nine to request to speak. And finally, when you hear the last four digits of your phone number, press star six.
To members of the public calling in, when it's your turn to speak, please state which of the agenda items you'd like to speak on. You have one minute per item to speak, up to three minutes total, and one minute for general public comment. We'll tell you when your time's up. When speaking on the agenda items, you must be on topic. Our goal is to get through as many speakers as we can. If you're not speaking on topic, or if we can't tell whether you're speaking on topic, you'll get one brief warning from me or the president. If you do not immediately get clearly on topic, or again stray off-topic, the president will cut you off and you'll forfeit the rest of your speaking time, and we'll move on to the next speaker. You'll take 30 minutes total of public comment. The items that are open for public comment are items one, 17, 18, and 19. That's one, 17, 18, and 19. Finally, for members of the public calling in to speak, as soon as you hear someone identify you by reading off the last four digits of your phone number, or if you're using a block number or other identifying information, you're live in the council meeting and it's your turn to speak. Please immediately press star six to unmute yourself. We understand that you may also be listening on a computer or other device. Please keep one ear to the phone so that you hear us as soon as we announce you, because there's a slight time delay between the live meeting and the broadcast. Also, if you're listening on another device, when it's your turn to speak, please turn down the volume on the other devices right away, both because of the time delay and because we're going to get feedback otherwise. Thank you, Madam President, and we are ready to take public comment.
Okay, let's go ahead and take the first speaker.
Caller with a phone number ending in 7186, please press star six. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
What items do you want to speak on? Hello?
Speaker, if you're listening on another device, please turn down the volume on that and just listen on your phone because of the time delay.
Speaker, what items do you want to speak on? Okay, let's move on to the next speaker.
Caller with a phone number ending in 1148, please press star six. Caller with a phone number ending in 1148, please press star six. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
I'd like to speak on all available items and general public comment, please.
You have three minutes and one minute for your general public comment. Go ahead, sir.
Yes, thank you. Apologize to Ms. Autry, Martinez, for your disrespect. Great 30 minutes of democracy for a population of 4 million people.
So can we get on the items?
17, 18, and 19, you're installing names on Hollywood Walk of Fame. These three items will pass, of course, because all votes from the Los Angeles Sleazy Council are yes votes. The very bedrock of Los Angeles Sleazy Council corruption. This is an aberration, of course, that occurred on February 19th when Kerkorian and, of course, Mr. Bonin voted no on De Leon's raping of the city via the Antifa.
Speaker, can we get back on the items, please?
Project, these, the council spending time on... Just be quiet and listen, okay? The council spending time on these frivolous Hollywood celebrity names. Do we need that? No, not when these same Hollywood streets are filled with homeless and dying at the rate of three to eight people daily. Is that what we really need, public? These people spending times on celebrity names when people are dying in the streets? Taking nothing against these three celebrities, absolutely nothing, and their accomplishments, but it has nothing, absolutely nothing, to do with you corrupt people sitting there watching people die in the streets. The streets of Hollywood, downtown, and Venice are just one big homeless encampment. Tourism's gone. So, you know, Hollywood is gone. Because who wants to fly 3,000 miles to watch homeless encampments on Hollywood? Clean up, clean up the streets, stop the corruption via your campaign contributions from the developers, the consultants, and the unions, including the police union.
So, Speaker, we seem to have gotten kind of far from the items. Can we get back on the items or go to general public comment?
I am on the items, sir. It's called freedom of speech, Mr. Thought Police, but I do have... I will go to public comment now, Mr. Thought Police, okay?
Yes, please, go ahead.
Thank you, sir. I introduce motion number 21001. Again, no sitting council, sitting city council person can hold the office of his existing term unless homelessness in the city is reduced by 25% in their current term. Development on the homelessness. My adjourning motion is, again, in loving memory of the three to eight homeless people that will die in the streets today due to the LA City Council's corruption and incompetence and campaign contribution. And Ms. Ramon, on the eighth, on the ninth, rather, your vote for items eight and nine for De Leon's raping of the city budget was disgraceful. Are you stupid or are you corrupt the way these people are? People went to bat for you in that office, Ms. Ramon. Disgraceful! Giving 1,100 units in 11... Affordable? Are you kidding? That's what we need in this homeless crisis? Ms. Ramon?
Next speaker. Speaker, are you there?
Caller with a phone number ending in 6068, please press star six.
Hello, yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Yes, this is Richie Serjenko. I'll just give general public comment, please.
You have a minute, please go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to say it's been about 27 days since FEMA offered full reimbursements to commandeer the hotels, and I wonder how that didn't make it on the agenda for this week, you know, just a report back. And I think, you know, if this council continues to delay things like this with simple things like a report back, like people are going to be really upset. And I'm not sure if you all remember what happens when people show up outside of your house early in the morning or late at night, you know. We're going to get to a point where people are very upset and we go down this cycle of, you know, you all living uncomfortable lives because people are outside of your house all hours of the day making noise. We need to do something right now. And as far as item number six, you know, we, I know it's not available for its own comment, I can use general public comment for it, you know, we want to defund the police. We don't want community safety partnerships with LAPD, considering what they shared about George Floyd over the...
Blame the George Floyd death on... We should defund...
Caller with a phone number ending in 0914, please press star six. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Hi, yeah, my name is Caleb Crowder and I'd also like to speak on general public comment as well.
You have a minute, please begin, sir.
Yeah, I'd like to echo the sentiments of the previous caller. I would love to see, I mean, many of us would love to see some of these report backs come back. It was really exciting news that we would have 100% of any commandeer buildings reimbursed by FEMA. It'd be great to see you guys use that money. We have folks who are hurting right now who need non-congregate shelter, so we'd love to see you use those dollars additionally. I'd love to see something done about what's happening with item six. I know it's not up for comments today, but it's really troubling that we continue to police communities that are poor and black and brown, and all these things keep happening quietly. It happened yesterday, we were commenting at the Department of Transportation, or sorry, the Transportation Committee. This stuff is really, really troubling, and I hope those of you that care and are listening will start to fight against stuff like this because we need you. We'll continue to push, but we need you to show up for us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Call in user two, please press star six. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Hi, I'd like to just give a general public comment.
You have a minute, please begin.
Thank you. Council, it's beyond disgraceful the way you move so slowly, especially considering that you have the opportunity to move a little quicker by, you know, following the city charter and holding Friday meetings. I've got a mixed messaging from staff. Paul Clipps' office says that you don't have Friday meetings because of the furlough. Mary Martinez's office says it's because of the emergency order. I just think it's a bunch of dumb excuses for you guys to not do your jobs in this city while the number of unhoused people dies, like five and a half people a day, when last year it was four, the year before it was three. I have said sarcastically that it was Mitchell Farrell's goal to get that number as high as possible before the Olympics, but I didn't know that it was actually true, and it's a damn disgrace that it is. So I would please urge this council to... I don't even know what to urge you guys to do, to be honest, because all you guys do is give money to cops and developers and criminalize the rest of us. I mean, giving, like, these community safety partnerships where you guys just pretty much find new ways to give money to police.
Thank you, Speaker.
Caller with the phone number ending in 4950, please press star six. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Good morning, my name is Zainab. I'd like to speak on general public comment.
You have a minute, please begin.
Great, thanks. I'm a resident of Councilmember Gil Sidiyo's district, District One, and just want to say firstly, what is this agenda? The only items we can comment on are about the Hollywood Walk of Fame. We're in a pandemic right now. I don't know if you all are aware that thousands of people have died in LA just in the last month. I also want to talk about the public safety report that recommends deploying cops in public housing. Not sure what's not clicking for you all. Cops don't keep people safe, they don't protect welfare. If you think they're going to do anything other than terrorize people in public housing, you're delusional. This is terrible. Please don't allocate any money to this. We've been asking you to defund the police, seize hotels, and cancel rent. It's not that hard. And like someone else mentioned, the FEMA funding became available weeks ago, and you all keep picking the can down the road and not treating this like the catastrophe it is. And lastly, it feels like every week dozens of people have to call and literally beg you to make a single useful decision to prevent mass death, and it's not working, so I'm not sure what you want us to do, and it seems like the only way to get any politician to move on anything is to just show up outside your house and protest.
Caller with the phone number ending in 1006, please press star six. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Morning. It's Rob Quan, I'd like to speak on general public comment.
You have a minute, please begin.
Thank you. It's interesting to see that yesterday movers of the big planning reform item, Councilmember Martinez and Harris Dawson, both disagreed about what the problem is. Councilmember Harris Dawson told us that we don't have a broken process, what a broken person, as have Mitch Englander, Georgia Sparza, Ray Chan, John Lee, and all of the other city officials under investigation don't exist. Councilmember Martinez's perspective is in complete contrast. Not only does she now believe that we have a broken system, but one that predates what a we are. That's the case, Councilmember Martinez. Why did you hire Rick Coca to be your comms director? The guy who served as the cover guy for We Are The Corruption for over a decade and only hopped off after the FBI raided City Hall. Either way, I was happy to hear that you parted ways with him a few weeks back. For anyone out there in LA, if you thrive in a toxic, dysfunctional, corrupt environment, CD6 is hiring.
Thank you, Speaker.
Caller with the phone number ending in 8639, please press star six. Caller with the phone number ending in 8639, please press star six. Caller with the phone number ending in 8919, please press star six. Caller with the phone number ending in 8919, please press star six. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Uh, yeah, this is Lynn McFadden. I'd like to speak on general public comment.
You have a minute, please begin.
Um, yeah, I just think it's entirely shameful how little you're doing right now. This, this agenda is a joke. Um, I think we all know that. I'm glad that, uh, item six is called special. I hope that you guys realize that this is not what the city wants. We, the will of the voters is exactly the opposite of this. We do not want more money going to cops. We know that they're not going to actually help use that money to actually build more housing, get people into housing. Um, yeah, it's, it's a shame. You guys are a joke. And put some urgency on Rahman's motion. We have free money from FEMA and you're dragging your feet and letting people die. People are dying because you're not doing anything. So, act with some urgency for once, please.
Next speaker.
Caller with the phone number ending in 7719, please press star six. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Thank you. It's Eric Previn from Studio City. And I'd like to speak on all of the available items. And I-
Sure.
And also give a small general public comment.
You have three minutes for items one, 17, 18, 19, and followed by one minute for general public comment. Please begin.
Yeah, well, first of all, thank you, Faubel. And I'd like to thank Mr. O'Farrell and the Chamber of Commerce in Hollywood for honoring Ryan O'Neal and Ally McGraw the same week. This is very romantic, uh, for love story. It was February 11th that it happened, so I guess this is the post facto, build a small monument. You know, it's a big business, uh, Hollywood, but the ideas from the past of business improvement districts and cops all over the place and people being chased around is kind of being looked down upon as we go forward. What we want to try to do is house some of the people who are in our midst who need help. And I know that, uh, Mr. O'Farrell likes to blow hard about it, but what he should also do is glance at some of the other items and realize that when you go-
So, Mr. Previn, we seem to have moved off the agenda items. Could you get back on them, please?
Uh, Hollywood and the Hollywood Walk of Fame are pernicious, so I wanted to bring that up. Is that off point, Faubel?
No, go ahead.
Okay, I don't think you should be making a ruling in any case. I'm trying to be, you know, diligent here and stay on the ridiculous items because this agenda has been called out by a number of Angelenos is ridiculous, frankly, if I may. I mean, may I, may I say that or is that off limits?
So, let's get back on the agenda items, please, again.
I'll get my general on the minute, but I want to just finish up on Ryan O'Neal and Ally McGraw. I want to finish up on Ryan O'Neal and Ally McGraw, who were, um, you know, Ryan O'Neal was married to Farrah Fawcett, as some of you remember. And he and she suffered greatly. In a way, they were kind of the Brad and, uh, you know, Angelina Jolie of their era, and they struggled. But it's nice that we can do these things, but it is so appalling that this kind of fodder is stuffed into the meeting where you'll allow me to speak, whereas the other items like the litigations, which I have a great interest in because I don't think you're doing-
So, Mr. Previn, you can talk about any of the other items during general, general public comment. Do you want to go to general public comment then?
Yeah, let's go to general public comment. Thank you. I'll take the one minute. So, here's the thing. When you have five closed sessions, that you don't go into closed session because Krikorian clinks the glass and says, "We all agree. No, don't, no need to look. 1.75 million." And we'll collect whatever it is from cake with the other, uh, case, but pending something that we'll never see again. So, that's a red flag. And when you get somebody to pay 600,000 or 700,000 and prominently settle, how much did they really owe comes to mind. So, the public does have an interest in these cases. And the one in particular is Mr. O'Farrell's little baby, where he decided for political gain to launch a ordinance that would allow the city to scan people for affiliation to organizations like the ACLU, which I subscribe to, or the NRA, which I don't. But you shouldn't be scanning, uh, you know, for affiliation in a democracy. People can do business with the city of L.A. based on the merits. So, I think the office holder accounts should be gathered up and they should all split the cost of 150 grand that a federal judge, uh, you know, imposed on the city.
Thank you, Mr. Previn.
Caller with the phone number ending in 9738, please press star six. Caller with the phone number ending in 9738, please press star six. Caller with the phone number ending in 9738, please press star six. Caller with the phone number ending in 0969, please press star six. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Hi, good morning. My name is Mariana. I'd like to speak on general public comment.
You have a minute, please begin.
Thank you. Um, I'm calling today on behalf of the Coalition for Humane Immigrant Rights, also the Nestherla, and also a part of the Push L.A. Coalition, which is based in South L.A. I'm calling in regards to council file 200875, the alternatives to law enforcement and traffic stops. We are calling because even though this item was introduced back in June of 2020, it has yet to be scheduled for a vote, and so we're urging the council to take a vote. Furthermore, as the coalition that came about as a result of the racist policing by the Metro Division in South L.A., we are extremely disappointed that LAPD has decided to once again redeploy the rogue Metro Division, which just last summer was investigated for falsifying records. The criminalization of flagging that Latinx South Central is a backward move, and city leadership must put a stop to these stops. Our people require urgent action by the council today. Bring this motion up for a vote and remove the Metro LAPD unit from our communities. Thank you.
Thank you.
Caller with the phone number ending in 5318, please press star six. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
My name is Gina Viola, and I'd like to speak on general public comment.
You have a minute, please begin.
Okay, your very first speaker was muted, and we could hear her unmute, but you couldn't. So, please go back and look for Alex Cave and give her her time. Um, the length you will go to quietly funnel more funds to the LAPD is beyond shameful. Item number six needs to be reopened. There were over 500 public comments on that, on this item, and they're nowhere to be found now. It is though it didn't even exist. You're working under the impression that there's no public interest on this, and that is just not true. We need this to be opened back up for public comment. No more money can be going to the LAPD for anything. The LAPD still owes the black community $250 million that the mayor promised, which turned into $150 million, which you all couldn't even figure out how to appropriate to the black community. So, now that money is probably going back to the LAPD. Shameful. Also, commandeer the hotels, seize the hotels. I don't understand what's happening. 100% of that money is going back to you.
Thank you, Speaker.
FEMA is going to reimburse-
Next speaker?
Call in user four, please press star six. Please, please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Yeah, I'd like to give general public comment, please.
You have a minute, please begin.
Okay. And Faubel, please try not to, uh, interrupt any more callers. Thank you. Um, first, I want to say, uh, Ms. Martinez, you should apologize to Ms. Autry, stand in solidarity with Mr. Moses. Um, and yeah, item number six, what are you guys doing? Why are you skimming funds from every other department to, and funneling it to LAPD? How many times do we have to tell you we don't want more money to LAPD? Joey Buckets, yesterday, when he wasn't freaking out and interrupting, uh, public commenters during the transportation meeting, was saying he wants, uh, the Department of Transportation under LAPD. That freak would put every single department in the city under LAPD if he could. Stop funneling money to LAPD. We don't need more police. We need more services. And goddamn it, get your act together and commandeer the empty hotels. FEMA is going to reimburse you. What are you doing? It's been 27 days.
Thank you, Speaker.
Caller with the phone number ending in 3972, please press star six. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Uh, Eden Meyer, uh, and, uh, general comment?
You have a minute, please begin.
Um, I am calling in to, uh, urge you guys to take the money, uh, and buy the hotels, um, please. Uh, people in L.A. are hurting. The homeless are hurting. Uh, please do this. Um, I believe it's item 21-0159. I, I know that's not up for comment today. I, again, am calling in to urge you to do this. Uh, I yield my time.
Caller with the phone number ending in 1642, please press star six. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
My name is Susan Winsburg of the Franklin Corridor Communities, speaking as an individual. General comment, please.
You have a minute, please begin.
Thank you. Um, I urge you to postpone your vote, um, about the Stires Staircase Bungalow Court that was a CHC nomination, uh, that was voted on last, or on the fourth, rather, and, um, the process was not done correctly. First of all, so many people weren't allowed to speak. And in the middle of it all, um, Councilman Sadio comes on because he had a dentist appointment that he had to get to, and he interrupted the public comment to blather on for six minutes stating his opposition openly, which he's not supposed to do during general comment. And furthermore, we were all instructed that we were not allowed to get off topic, that we were only allowed to speak on the merits of the nomination. But what did he do? He spoke about development and homelessness and everything that we were being reined in about and told not to speak on. So, I really wish that you would postpone the vote and have a proper Plumb hearing and reschedule it due to the improprieties during the special Plumb meeting that-
Thank you, Speaker.
Caller with the phone number ending in 8178, please press star six.
Hi, my name is Sophie Strauss, and I'd like to speak on general public comment.
You have a minute, please begin.
It's been 27 days since FEMA offered full reimbursement to house people in hotels. Four unhoused people die every day while we wait. That's over 100 preventable deaths. Over 100 people you have killed. That's a mass murder you've committed by wasting time. And the money's there. Garcetti could commandeer the hotels and reimburse them later. You could dig into the police budget like he's been begging you to, but instead you're inflating it with shit like item number six, which of course will lead to more deaths, more murder on your hands. There are so many important items on today's agenda, but all we can comment on is the Hollywood Walk of Fame? Are you kidding me? Stop burying everything in committee. Not all voting members of this council are in every committee meeting, so they're not hearing from the public on these items before voting on them. And bring back Friday meetings as required by the city charter. Why have none of you spoken about this? Not even progressives? We're begging you to do your jobs. Do them while you still have them. I yield my time.
Thank you, Speaker.
Caller with the phone number ending in 0899, please press star six.
Hi. Hello, this is Stacy Dawson. I'd like to speak on general public comment.
You have a minute, please begin.
Okay, wake up Joe Buscayeno. Wake up Monica Rodriguez. You're on camera. You were so obnoxious yesterday that it was an embarrassment to everyone in Los Angeles that we pay your salaries. Act like you care, even if you don't. Okay, yesterday, the Transportation Committee was a travesty. Uh, councilmembers ignore us during public comment and general meeting, but Joe Buscayeno violated the Brown Act several times, interrupting and directly addressing commenters because he cannot take how much we hate him. Mike Bonin, you taught the council how to weaponize oversized vehicle bans in 2017. Please, Mike Bonin, please, I don't even know if you're here. Model humility for us. If you're even there, admit you were wrong. You voted yesterday for more bans. You're literally trying to kill people. All of you are trying to kill people by taking away the shelter of their vehicles while you flounder and are completely incompetent as you cannot solve one single problem. Why? Because it's 15 silos of 15 individuals instead of 15 people working together. And that's what I want to say. But before I say, this item six, what are you even talking about? Does the, uh-
Thank you, Speaker.
Okay, the CHP- Please, I don't even know if you're here.
Caller with the phone number ending in 5332, please press star six. Caller with the phone number ending in 5332, please press star six. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Hi, my name is Laura Addery, and I'd like to speak on general public comment.
You have a minute, please begin.
Thanks. Um, I'm so alarmed to see that we have all the resources in place to, um, be able to house our unhoused neighbors. We have FEMA money just waiting to be used, uh, and many vacant properties waiting to be used. Um, unhousing or is, and poverty is a political choice that we are making actively every day by not addressing this urgent need immediately. So, please, I'm urging you, please, put forward the FEMA motion and let's get this money utilized. There's no other barrier besides, um, all of you dragging your feet. And this is a matter of life and death for many, many Angelenos. I yield my time. Thank you.
Members, that concludes public comment. We need to reconsider on three items on today's agenda. That's item three, four, and five. Madam Clerk, please open the roll for reconsideration of items three, four, and five.
Number two, aye.
Bonin.
Bonin, aye.
Buscayeno.
Aye.
Sadio. De Leon.
Sorry.
Aye.
Harris Dawson. Coretts.
Aye.
Krikorian.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
O'Farrell.
Aye.
Price.
Aye.
Rahman.
Aye.
Ridley Thomas.
Aye.
Rodriguez.
Aye.
13 ayes. These items are now before council.
Okay, there needs to be a technical change on all three items, so I'm going to go ahead and refer it back to the Public Safety Committee without objection. Let's go ahead and move on to, um, items one and seventeen, 17 through 19. Let's go ahead and prepare to vote on those items. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Blumenfeld.
Blumenfeld, aye.
Bonin.
Bonin, aye.
Buscayeno.
Aye.
Sadio. De Leon.
Aye.
Harris Dawson. Coretts.
Aye.
Krikorian.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
O'Farrell.
Aye.
Price.
Aye.
Rahman.
Aye.
Ridley Thomas.
Aye.
Rodriguez.
Aye.
13 ayes. These items are adopted.
Please move on to item number six. This was called special by Ms. Rahman.
Yes, hi, um, hold on, pull up my notes. Um, I, you know, I really wanted to start by thanking you for this opportunity to ask a question about this. Um, I think, for me, really, given the incredible community engagement, um, around policing and budgeting last year, this item caught my attention when I was looking over the agenda this week. And I, I really just wanted to get a little bit more context to inform my vote today. And, um, I know a lot of my fellow council members are really engaged around this issue, and I was very grateful for, uh, the willingness of their- I was very grateful for the willingness of their staff to answer our questions. I also had an opportunity to read more about the CSP. I read a great UCLA Luskin study about it that was recommended to me. And I read Sarah Suleman's excellent and very nuanced reporting about the real benefits and some of the concerns around this program. But today, I'm actually really mostly concerned about the process through which these funds were allocated. I wanted to understand the Resident Services Fund and the goals of that Resident Services Fund. And to ask, what were the steps taken to allocate this $9 million from that fund to the CSP? And how were residents, particularly in the communities where these, where the project is happening, involved in that process? And I was wondering whether Hakla was here to answer this question?
Ms. Ramon, did you ask Hakla to join the meeting? Let me see if they're--
We did reach out to them, yes.
You did?
But I'm not sure--
Let me make sure they're here. I did not get a request to invite them to our meeting, so give me just a second.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Ms. Ramon, it does not appear that Hakla is here. Or they have not joined our meeting. Did they indicate to you that they were going to be here?
I know we reached out to them with a question and told them that we would be asking the question.
Okay.
Let me check with my staff to see if we got an assent that they would be--
All right, Mr. Bonin also has a question, but just let me see if I can reach out to them right now, see if I can get them on the phone.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Mr. Bonin?
Thanks, Madam President. My, my question was along the same lines. I'll elaborate just a bit and perhaps I can follow up with a motion to get some of the answers if Hakla isn't here. I originally wasn't going to press my button on this because none of the programs impacted here actually in my district. But the question about the, 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 the Resident Service Funds actually does impact my district because one of the HUD properties, Mar Vista Gardens, is in my district in, in Del Ray. And I've been hearing a lot from folks there who are curious about how this money is allocated, similar questions to Ms. Ramon. My, my understanding is that HUD every year allocates about $30 million a year to fund residential services at all of those sites. And, you know, the folks at Mar Vista Gardens will tell you that there's a lot of services that they're desperate for that they're not getting. And they're confused about how the, the funds are allocated and what the process is. Of the 30 million, is that divided equally among the dozen or so HUD properties? Is it divided by population? Or is it divided in such a way that money that would otherwise be evenly distributed to, to all places, including Mar Vista Gardens, or William Mead, or Rose Hill, or Estrada, gets reduced because a disproportionate amount then goes to the ones with, with community safety partnerships? What I'll do is, I'd like to work with some of my constituents at Mar Vista Gardens and do a separate motion that I will do next week, asking Hakla for a report on how these funds are allocated, what are the things they are eligible for, and how are those funding allocations made so that everybody can get some transparency and to sort of build in the, the input and the collaboration of the resident advisory councils? Thanks.
Ms. Ramon, it does not appear like Hakla has joined our meeting. They're not responding.
Okay.
Has your staff tried to reach out to them? I did not get a request to invite them to the meeting, so if you did, it didn't seem, doesn't appear like they've joined our meeting.
Okay, I apologize for that. Yeah, we did reach out to them and inform them that we would be asking a question today, but I don't know if there was--
How would you like to move forward? We can keep trying? I can move on to item 11, which was called special by Mr. Blumenfeld to give them additional time to join our meeting? Would you like to do that?
Sure. You know, I look to you for guidance on this.
Okay. We'll try one more time to see if we can get ahold of someone. Meanwhile, I'm going to go to Mr. Blumenfeld for item 11, sir.
Okay, great, thank you. Colleagues, this motion, item 11, streamlines safe parking and homeless services on property that's owned by LA DOT, including a safe parking lot in my district in Canoga Park. Parking lots are open to the public during the day. The program is one of the quickest things we can do to deliver on our homeless roadmap under the Judge Carter proceedings. Security guard, restroom, it's really the least we can do. And it's, it's relatively speaking, low impact, low infrastructure. It should be easy. People are dying on the streets. We have to move quickly and we have to cut red tape. Unfortunately, the Transportation Commission had to approve a parking lot in my district, even though we're using it after hours. And that slowed down losses approval, ate up staff time, required reports from the service provider. And worse, this Transportation Commission seems to have forgotten that they legally operate under borrowed authority from this council. They're not a charter commission, they're not meant to be a counterweight to this council. They're meant to handle certain administrative decisions that we have delegated to them. Once the council and the mayor have acted by funding the homeless roadmap, et cetera, approval of such a lot by the commission should be a formality. Unfortunately, they didn't seem to understand this. They not only failed to treat this as routine matter, they decided that they were homeless experts and took it upon themselves to question the efficacy of safe parking, misled the community into thinking that they were going to relitigate this issue, decided that, that my community outreach was inadequate, and implied that they would give the neighborhood council veto power over the project. Here are some actual quotes that my staff took down when the commission took up this issue in January. They're edited for brevity. Quote, "We can shape it however we like. We can make it subject to neighborhood council approval. We can make it subject to us approving a final operational plan." Quote, "If it's all, if it's all impacting, if it's at all impacting, we just simply do not renew it in 30 days and they're not allowed to continue." Quote, "The motion on the table is for us to consider the input from the neighborhood council and for the commission to have full control on where this permit goes in the next meeting." One commissioner, who was very clear about his distaste for safe parking near his home in North Hollywood, said, "I do not approve of this proposal. It's been extremely frustrating that there's been no enforcement for either vehicles or other encampments around there," meaning in his neighborhood in North Hollywood, "even though there have been shelters and other, and safe parking has been built. And I don't want any suggestion in my mind that this safe parking was approved in any way." Quote, "I'm not approving this in any way without the neighborhood council approving it, and I'm going to go with whatever the neighborhood council wants." So as you've heard, the commission believed that overseeing the service provider was their responsibility, and by no means was the safe parking permit assured, despite it being in our homeless roadmap. And colleagues, as you know, commissions are not meant to be a check and balance on city council. Although a temporary safe parking, parking lot has a very low community impact, in the case of this one, I'd mentioned it to the neighborhood council during a presentation, talked about it to the bid, sent out a 199 letter to all the immediate residential neighbors, held a Zoom meeting with the business stakeholders in the area prior to this Transportation Commission meeting. And yes, some folks, some of the business there still have issues with safe parking in, in their area, but they were ready to work with my team and work with the service provider. The Transportation Commission filled them with unrealistic expectations and stoked the fires against it. Look, I'm very lucky. I have a great local neighborhood council. Even after the Transportation Commission overreached, the neighborhood council spent hours coming up with constructive suggestions and conditions on the safe parking lot, and I have urged the service provider to honor these as much as possible. That's how it's supposed to work. And I know the neighborhood council, the local stakeholders are going to work diligently with the service provider to make corrections should there be any problems. And if this lot really causes problems, it's not hard to move it elsewhere or to stop it. The infrastructure is low. But what we can afford to do is delay. People are dying on the streets. We cannot allow bureaucracy or commissions to throw up unnecessary roadblocks into what is already a cumbersome process. I value the neighborhood council, I value local input, and will continue working with, with all of these stakeholders to make sure the lot is successful. But the Transportation Commission has no business being an intermediary on this. I don't want any projects anywhere in the city to be bogged down by this type of extra bureaucracy. This motion appropriately streamlines the process and removes the commission entirely from it. When the city council approves and funds safe parking and other interventions on DOT parking lots, the permits should be handled by staff without commission hearings. The GSD master lease that governs other sites can just as easily govern sites on the DOT lot. The motion remedies the situation. I want to thank the six cosponsors who are part of this, who recognize the urgency of this, and I ask for an aye vote.
Thank you, Mr. Blumenfeld. Mr. Buscaino?
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Blumenfeld, if there is a mic to be dropped, you just drop that microphone. The frustrations, and I thank you for sharing your frustrations on moving on efforts to solve the homelessness issue and crisis in our city, but oftentimes, people get in the way. And it pains me to hear the Transportation Commission-- by the way, members, let's be reminded, the Transportation Commission is an advisory commission. So thank you to the Transportation Commission for your advice, but let's be mindful that we are elected to solve problems. Local leaders lead. And get out of the way. And it'd be good for us to maybe lob a call over to the mayor, who appoints the commission, and remind him that we're, we're in the business of solving problems. And this is not a problem, it's a crisis, a humanitarian crisis amongst us. So Bob, thanks so much, Mr. Blumenfeld, for raising their concern. I've had many concerns and struggles and frustrations, particularly on the state land of, the Caltrans land in our San Pedro Bridge home, that, you know, took 18 months to move through the layers of bureaucracy from the state level to federal level. And here we are, trying to move and, and help those, the most vulnerable, living in sidewalks and in cars. Luckily, it's moved, but it shouldn't have taken 18 damn months. But thank you for raising this issue. All I'm saying, I'm with you, and I, and I share your frustration. Let's continue to, to press forward and, and overcome these obstacles, even amongst our own city family. Thank you.
Mr. Bonin?
Thanks, Madam President. I just, I just wanted to join in thanking Mr. Blumenfeld for, for the motion, which is excellent. Anything that can help us remove roadblocks and expedite safe parking or other programs is essential. It actually raises a broader point, though, is there, there needs to be a message, and I think it needs to come from, from the council, I think it needs to come from the mayor, there needs to be a message to every single general manager in this city. You cannot stop, roadblock, or veto anything a council member or an elected official is doing to try to address the homelessness crisis. Wreckin Parks should not be getting in the way of Mr. O'Farrell trying to do something in his district, just like the Transportation Commission shouldn't be in Mr. Blumenfeld's district, and just like CAO shouldn't be roadblocking or saying no to projects in Mr. Sadio or Mr. Coretts's district. The message to every single general manager, every single department head, has got to be, your job is to help us get it done, not to tell us why it can't be done. And that's just got to be the bottom line, no more complicated than that. Thank you.
Mr. Coretts?
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Mr. Blumenfeld, for bringing this forward. Thank you, Mr. Bonin, for the comments that you just made, which are not something I was thinking of addressing, but I think it's absolutely a message that we want to get within the city family, that everyone needs to help and not provide roadblocks, which I've found many thus far in this process. I do want to say for the record, I'm not aware of a single safe parking site, anywhere that's been implemented that has actually been a problem. It's a relatively trouble-free process. People are just there at night when most residents are asleep. There is security, there is no impact. People are, in my district, have expressed concerns that they may be near schools. Well, they're not open during school hours. There's no interaction with homeless people in their cars and students. It's a relatively trouble-free process. It's just people's worst nightmares and imaginations that largely create problems with safe parking. It's, it's the least impactful way of dealing with the homeless that I think we have. There's virtually no interaction with, with anyone in any neighborhood. And it helps protect people that are sleeping in their cars from, from any danger. So I, I think this is something that we want to streamline as much as we can, make it as easy as possible. And once again, I thank you, Mr. Blumenfeld, for bringing this forward.
Mr. De Leon?
Thank you very much, Madam President. I want to sort of echo some of the comments to the issue, not directly that Bob Blumenfeld just brought up, and perhaps speak in general to the issue with regards to Mr., Mr. Bonin. I think we have some very dedicated, very hardworking public servants who are very dedicated to the city, to our residents, to the institution that is the health, respectively the departments that they're in charge of. And I have a lot of admiration and respect that collectively, all of us around the horseshoe share in that admiration, that recognition of their hard work and dedication to the people. That being said, also too, in my short tenure, as a member of this august body, is also to, I find, a culture, I don't want to say it's pervasive, but there is a culture also to of no. And it's hardwired default system is no, as opposed to, how can we get to yes? How can we work this problem out? A calamity that's manifested in our streets, our alleyways, our parks, in our neighborhoods, how can we figure out proactively, can we get to no to solve, become a problem solver? Not to defend territory, territory or real estate portfolio assets, or continue to empire, build empires, but how can we figure this out? How can we be problem solvers? I know the difference between being appointed and selected and being elected, which is two different things. And also too, I get it, you know, folks, you know, the professional mandarins, whoever they may be, you know, believe that they can outlast, and oftentimes, they do actually outlast elected officials. But given the circumstances that we're living today in our great city of LA, the fact that we are ground zero for COVID infections and mortality rate, given the fact that we have 41,000 people living on our streets or alleyways, both sheltered and unsheltered on any given night, that sends a very clear message that we must do more, we must do better. To quote, you know, our good friend, you know, MRT, Mark Billy Thomas, we must work harder and stronger and better, you know, on these issues. But I, I know this is sort of a general commentary, that's why we need everyone, that's all hands on deck. It's not just our county partners, our state and federal partners, it's also partners and general managers in the departments, and not just the general managers, but those underneath the general managers and the mid-level folks. Everyone working in concert with each other, as opposed to against each other. Because oftentimes, so far on the issue of homelessness, I can say this, I have no problems with our unhoused community members. A lot of the energy has been spent dealing with the culture of no to everything. So that's just an open commentary. Thank you, Madam President, for allowing me to indulge myself for a few moments. I just want to take advantage of, you know, the comments of Mr. Blumenfeld and, and Mr. Bonin, so I appreciate it.
Ms. Ramon?
Yeah, I just wanted to also add my thanks to Councilmember Blumenfeld for bringing this up. And I think it, working on this issue requires both big-picture thinking, but also removing the tiny and numerous blockages at every step of the way and getting projects done. And I appreciate your attention to this particular process. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Ramon, we're going to go ahead and vote on item 11. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Blumenfeld.
Blumenfeld, I.
Bonin.
Bonin, I.
Buscaino.
Aye.
Sadio.
Sadio, aye.
De Leon.
Aye.
Harris Dawson. Coretts.
Aye.
Krikorian.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
O'Farrell.
Aye.
Price.
Aye.
Rahm.
Aye.
Ridley Thomas.
Aye.
Rodriguez.
Fourteen ayes, these items are adopted. This item is adopted. Okay, Ms. Rahm, we're back to item number six. Your staff has indicated to us that you would go ahead and ask your questions after council?
Uh, no, I think I, I, uh, basically, I can just, um, I think we have a pathway to getting some of these questions answered through, uh, what Councilmember Bonin proposed.
Okay.
Um, and I think I'm happy to defer to, to council members who have, you know, these sites in their districts, and, uh, we're welcome to proceed with this vote right now, I think that's fine.
All right, thank you. Madam Clerk, let's go ahead and...
Madam President?
Mr. Buscaino?
Ms. Rahm, it, it, uh, we've been a big advocate of CSP, i-if, you know, based on my experience in Watts, you can sleep well at night knowing that this is a national model, community policing program to follow. Uh, what we've seen, investment in communities of color, but building that faith, trust, and confidence between police officers, particularly in Jordan Downs, and in our community members in Watts. Um, but you have, yeah, asked those questions away, but I'm, I'm hopeful, and I recognize Chief Moore, who has now, um, made a commitment to expand CSP citywide, uh, by putting in the best and brightest in Deputy Chief Amad Tengredes, who, um, is, is leading this effort to look at ways to expand CSP as we've done outside of, of housing developments, and particularly in, in Mr. Price's district, Mr. Harris Dawson's district. So, I'm a fan.
Thank you, Mr. Buscaino. Okay, we're gonna go ahead and prepare to vote on this item, item number six. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Blumenfield.
Blumenfield, aye.
Bonin.
Bonin, aye.
Buscaino.
Aye.
Sidiyo.
Aye.
De Leon.
Aye.
Harris Dawson. Coretza.
Aye.
Krikorian.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
O'Farrell.
Aye.
Price.
Aye.
Rahm. Councilmember Rahm.
Aye.
Ridley Thomas.
Aye.
Rodriguez.
Aye.
Fourteen ayes, this item is adopted. Okay, what's before us, Madam Clerk?
Madam President, council has motions for posting and referral. Motions will be posted on the city clerk's website shortly after the meeting for the public's viewing. To subscribe to receive copies of today's council motions to your email, please visit clerk.lacity.org.
Okay, posted and referred. Members, are there any announcements? Any adjourned motions? Okay, I have an adjourned motion, if I can please ask all members to rise? Colleagues, it is with the heaviest hearts that we adjourn today's meeting in honor of one of Los Angeles' trailblazing women, and the first-ever woman to serve on the city council as council president, Pat Russell. The great Pat Russell passed away at the age of ninety-seven. As a councilwoman, she represented Angelenos in Westchester, Playa del Rey, Venice, Baldwin Hills, and the LAX area. Mrs. Russell was elected to her full, first full term in nineteen seventy-one, and re-elected repeatedly until nineteen eighty-seven. She was the fourth woman elected to the city council, and in July of nineteen eighty-three, she became the first woman to serve as president of the city council, paving the way for women in leadership here in our city. She was born in Portland, Oregon in nineteen twenty-three. She went to public schools and attended the University of Washington, where she was a Phi Beta Kappa and student body president. In college, she met returning U.S. Army serviceman William Russell, with whom she shared a love of the outdoors. She married in nineteen forty-six, and they had three children, Steve, David, and Mercedes. Pat was an activist. She was introduced to the League of Women Voters and was eventually elected president of the Los Angeles City Chapter, the Los Angeles County Chapter as well. She then made the courageous decision to run for office. We all, have all benefited from her great work during her years here on the city council. She champ-championed issues such as establishing the city's noise regulation for the Los Angeles International Airport, which created the standards for federal law, changing the Los Angeles Police Department's policy for investigating officers involved shootings, transferring the responsibilities from the department to the district attorney, supporting zoning reforms that made it easier to establish more childcare centers, imagine that, advocating for the Metro Rail subway project, and in nineteen eighty-four, she was off, she was author of a measure requiring developers in much of her district to help pay for transportation improvements before their projects could be built. It was one of the city's boldest efforts to make private enterprise pay for public improvements, and became a model for other areas. Her service also consisted of serving as president of the Southern California Association of Governments and chairwoman of the Los Angeles County Transportation Commission, um, that later became the Metropolitan Transportation Authority. She was happiest when she was mentoring young women and loved spending time with high school students throughout a program that she, when she invited them to spend all day with her and other elected officials. After her years in elected office, she organized a regional institute of Southern California, a public-private partnership that expanded local, that explored local program, problems. During the rest of her free time, she was able to pursue her love for hiking, mountain climbing, and skiing. She remained active throughout her ni, the nineteen nineties, volunteering with the Los Angeles, um, for Harmonic, attending the Holy Nativity Church in Westchester, um, and also was just loved, loved the outdoors as much as possible, and she loved doing that with her family. We want to thank her for her tenacity and dedication for serving our city. Her legacy will live on forever through the halls of this building. As a working mother, she recognized the importance of quality char-child care, so that working families would have a place for their children to go while their parents went to work to make ends meet. Pat will be remembered not only as a woman, but for lifting women and girls up through their voices and giving them, giving them an opportunity to lead. We send her family our deepest condolences, and we thank them for sharing their mother with our city for so many years. May she rest in peace. Pat Russell is survived by her son Steve Russell, David Russell, and three grandchildren. She was preceded in her death by her daughter Mercedes and her sister Mary Akis. May she rest in peace. Mr. Blumenfield?
Yeah, thank you, you did a, a great job on, on that. I just wanted to add one little thing that, um, my, my predecessor's predecessor, uh, said about her, about Pat, you know, Pat was a, a giant, and basically, she said that she would never have run for city council had it not been for Pat Russell. I'm talking about Joey Picas, who was my predecessor's predecessor, and, uh, and she talked about how, um, Pat Russell really made a difference for her and so many other women, and I just was very moved by that and wanted to share that and, and add my voice as someone who honors the great late Pat Russell. Thank you.
Mr. Sidiyo?
Madam Chair, uh, thank you for, Madam President, thank you for this opportunity. I want to talk about, uh, an incredible cultural figure, a, a force within the Latino community, both here in the United States, throughout Latin America, and frankly, throughout the world. Johnny Pacheco passed away just a few days ago. Uh, as we all know, the Fanya All-Star label, uh, he was the Barry Gordy of, uh, Latino music. He was Dominican-born, he was a percussionist, uh, his father was a percussionist, and he learned from his father, but he wasn't just, um, a musician by family, but he also attended a Juilliard in New York, and he and, um, his colleague, Jerry Masucci, uh, created the, the Fanya, uh, label, and they would sell albums out of their, um, uh, out of the back of the cars in Spanish Harlem. And, uh, he created this whole genre of, of Latin American music, Latin American jazz. Uh, the list of stars is just innumerable, and he's just such a cultural force, uh, in this country, musician, bandleader, writer, arranger, producer, and visionary protectorate of the sound of, uh, Latinos throughout, uh, this country and throughout the world, the soundtracks of our lives, all attributed to, uh, their roots with Johnny Pacheco. So, let us close in his memory. Uh, as you know, I have a Latin jazz music festival, and we take a lot from, um, his efforts and productions that he produced, uh, in New York. Uh, in fact, the Fanya All-Stars actually played to us, a sold-out Yankee Stadium is one of the biggest, uh, concerts, uh, in the, in the world, uh, in New York, and, uh, as I said, we just lost him a few days ago. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sidiyo. No other adjourned motions? I would ask that Pat Russell's adjourned motion be in all council adjournment.
All members.
All members, um, thank you very much, our meeting is adjourned.